All right, let's go ahead and start tonight's meeting. Temecula City Council. Good evening. I wanted to first start by thanking Michaela and Evan O'Sullivan for our prelude music And we're going to have invocation by our very own Mr. Adams and our flag salute led by Mr. Stewart this evening.
Great, would you please stand? Dear Father, Lord, we just, we give you thanks for the freedoms that we enjoy to convene. Give you thanks, Lord, for the citizens of Temecula and the goodness and the safety of our city. Pray for wisdom and discernment for this city council, for the city staff, for our first responders. We just ask that you continue to guide us, be with us this meeting, and we pray for the citizens of Temecula. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right.[73.06][73.06][laughter] United States of America, and to the Republic of America, and to God, and to the faithful and dear citizens of Texas. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Camaturo.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Nigar.
Good to see everybody.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
I am here. Okay, so, starting off, we have, let's see, four presentations this evening. Our first one, I'd like to invite Leon Stavros to the podium. You're back again this year. Wonderful to see you. Presentation of proclamation for Greek Food Festival Month. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this real quick and then have our Mayor Protem Nigar bring it down. It is, "City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Temecula have enjoyed a decades-long family tradition of Greek festivals presenting a cornucopia of culinary appetizers, entrees, and pastries, as well as a variety of children's games and ethnic music and dance. And whereas Saturday and Sunday, October 13 and 14, the Greek Festival Committee of Temecula will once again share its different ethnic dishes, drinks, and entertainment with our friends and neighbors at our own civic center. And whereas City of Temecula takes pride in the rich cultural experiences the Greek festival offers its neighbors and family, now therefore, in order to recognize, inspire, and encourage family-centered Greek festivals that gladden the hearts and stomachs of all segments of our population, I, Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 to be Greek Food Festival Month."[192.81][192.81][applause]
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here's the proclamation, and in a moment, we'll take some photos if you'd like, but would you like to say something?
Sure would. This is my annual pilgrimage to the city hall, and this is the extent of my political activism. I'd like to read something. Mayor Matt Ron, city council members, fellow citizens of Temecula. My name is Leon Stavros, a satisfied citizen of Temecula since 2004. I'm here representing the Temecula Greek Festival Committee, a group that will host the annual Greek festival in Temecula. We'd like to thank the City of Temecula for the privilege of allowing us to host our event on your grounds and to proclaim October as the Greek Food Festival Month. Whether you are Greek or not, we welcome you to partake in our event and experience a bit of Greek culture. Getting a festival permit for a festival wasn't easy. The fire department told us that there shouldn't be any open flame cooking under a tent. That was a catastrophe. And we asked, "Why not?" And they said, "Because of grease fires." I like bad puns. Our event will take place on October 13th and 14th and will offer the following: authentic Greek foods, pastries, music, Greek folk dancing, a Mediterranean marketplace, a fun zone for the kids, and finally, the ambience of all town Temecula and city hall grounds. And now, if you please, a glimpse of our festival, although it's a video from 2013, And I'm sure everybody will enjoy it.[401.62][401.62][applause]
We so look forward to you coming every year. I remember last year, you brought the children, they did a special dance for us, and then each year, you always grace us with...
We like to bribe the city council.
Well, you know what? You did it again with some lovely baklava, so on behalf of all my colleagues, we want to say thank you. And would you like to take some photos?
Sure.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Next up, we have a proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Melissa Donaldson, are you here? Good evening, thank you for joining us. "The City of Temecula proclamation, whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries and impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief; and whereas domestic violence weakens the foundation of our community and impacts the lives of families and future generations; and stopping the cycle of violence requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community; and whereas we affirm the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse and recognize that more work remains until every individual is able to live a free life, free from fear or abuse and violence; whereas Safe Alternatives for Everyone, or SAFE, and the Riverside County Family Justice Centers have been committed to providing comprehensive, co-located network of programs and services and partnership to domestic violence victims and their families to break the cycle of violence; and whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to working together to end domestic violence so that no one suffers the hurt, humiliation, and betrayal that it brings. I, now therefore, Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do proclaim the month of October to be National Domestic Violence Awareness Month."[544.25][544.25][applause]
What a pleasure to see you.
See you too.
You're not here often enough.
I'm not. I miss everybody.
Well, you know what? The work that you've done at SAFE all these years, and now you're with the District Attorney's Office now.
I'll clear, I know it's a little confusing, but I'll clear that up.
Well, you know what? I'm gonna turn it over to you, and then we'll take some photos.
Awesome.
How about it?
Okay, so, do I have a clicker, or I just do the good old fashioned move it? So, as we just stated, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we share this month with another well-known cause, as you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which we love Michelle's place and we work well with them. When I say "we," I say Safe Alternatives for Everyone. I'm here representing three agencies today. So I'm currently the Director of Victim Services with the District Attorney's Office. And you might ask, "Why am I here, representing SAFE and the FJC?" And the answer to that is because I'm on the Board of Directors of both agencies, and we're gonna get into that a little bit. And I have Katie here, who is the Program Coordinator of the Family Justice Centers across the county. She has some purple ribbons for you that we'd love to share. I don't have baklava or any other delicious food, but we have ribbons. So Katie, you wanna come up and pass those out as I go? So, I'm not sure how many people know, but we've had the Family Justice Centers in Riverside County since 2004. They were started under DA Grover Trask. And at that time, when I was the Executive Director of SAFE, he asked me to join the group to help start the movement of installing and implementing these programs. The concept behind Family Justice Centers are co-located, multidisciplinary services to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, and elder abuse, and human trafficking. So we did that. We opened our first FJC in 2005 in Riverside. Marietta opened a couple of years after that, and our Indio office opened a few years ago. So as I stated, they're co-located services, and what that means was SAFE put an advocate in that facility, so when a victim walked in the door, they had the benefit of having all those services in one place. The DA's office, Safe Alternatives for Everyone, Rape Crisis Center, CPS, legal services, whatever that victim needed, and it's incredibly effective. SAFE has been the only nonprofit that has been at that site since it's been opened. Since that time, agencies have come and gone, but SAFE has been the constant. There are 22 operating in California, in the United States, I'm sorry, and there are six in development. So, our next slide. So the services are listed above. I'm not gonna read them all for you, but it's very inclusive and comprehensive, including children's groups, groups for adults, and domestic violence education, compensation, court support, you name it, it happens in our Family Justice Centers. Here's all the partners we have at the Family Justice Centers. If you look up there, it's county-wide, and it's pretty inclusive. So we know the concept of co-located services work. We know people get more help, and we know we've saved lives. So, what's different? So last year, SAFE, in partnership with FJC and throughout the services, served 3,963 folks. That's a lot of people. And that's why SAFE is so vitally important to the community. They've also done that in partnership with our agencies and provided all the services you see under here, including our Police Activities League program, which are youth violence prevention programs. So, the reason I'm here tonight is I have an exciting announcement, and if you look up at the screen, you're gonna see SAFE's logo, which I had made. I can't even tell you what year, because it's been a long time. The Family Justice Center logo, we did a few years after that. And after much conversation and thinking about all the different things SAFE offers the county and the other agencies, the boards of both agencies have decided to merge, and SAFE will become the fourth Family Justice Center location in Riverside County.[795.00][795.00][applause] Reason it's so exciting is, we don't have enough time here today, but the reason it's so exciting is we really are thinking, seeing that we're gonna be giving much more services for victims in our local area and throughout the county. One thing that's really exciting about it is Family Justice Centers have now really been driving funding streams. The big funders are no longer interested in siloed funding. They wanna fund agencies that are co-located and leverage resources, right? So us merging with the Family Justice Centers does just that. We're leveraging all the resources across the county, but still maintaining our community base and where we're providing services, especially for those, that community. They're all a little different, because they serve the community in which they are located, and that will be no different in this case. And right now, there's, the governor just signed a bill, it's a good one, I'm happy to say, for a change, that allocated $10 million to Family Justice Centers across the state of California, and our three existing have been allocated over $350,000 each. The next exciting thing is $400,000 is available to each emerging Family Justice Center, which SAFE is what we would consider emerging. So, I have staff sitting back here. They have four applications that the state of California has put together in less than 30 days, so you can imagine how excited they are. But, we're gonna bring in over 1 point, potentially $1.5 million to services to domestic violence victims in this county, and that's pretty amazing. So, we're really excited about this moving forward. I do wanna say this. Riverside County is, we underserve victims in this county for how big we are, how vast we are, for the amount of cases that come before the DA's office and folks that do not report. We have three major agencies in this county. It doesn't touch the surface of the amount of victims and children that we need to serve. And the reason it should be important to you is crime, if you look across the board at a lot of different crimes, and it's not an excuse for adults that commit crimes, but if you look back and follow them back to their childhood, most of those people have been exposed or lived in violent homes. We can't dismiss how important it is to get in there and help the kids that live in these homes. If you look at all the mass shootings that have happened, over, I heard, 95% from a training I was just at, have all lived in and been exposed to violence as children. We have to deal with it. This merger is gonna put us in a much better position to do that, and I hope bring much more resources to Southwest County and the rest of the county. So I appreciate the proclamation. The DA's office is very invested in this merger, as you know, the Family Justice Centers were started by the DA's office, and DA Heston is thrilled, and of course, I had to ask him first, because he is the boss. But we're excited, and we're gonna be moving forward with this merger. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.[974.13][974.13][applause]
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Would you like to take some pictures?
Sure.
Would you like to bring up anybody else?
Yes.
Bring them all up. Come on up.
And don't, I should have purple on, I'm so embarrassed. Everybody else does but me, and I have my ribbon.
Come on up, come on up. All of us.
Let's do it, if we're gonna do it, right?
If we're gonna do it, that's right. There we go. Great, and we'll get those photos to you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
All right, and our third proclamation of the evening. Let's see, I think I'll invite Christine to the podium, and then you can introduce the rest of them. Let me read the proclamation. "Whereas City Council of the City of Temecula recognizes Southwest California Manufacturing Council for their efforts in providing a forum of collaboration and best practices between the local manufacturing community and whereas the City of Temecula applauds their initiative and commitment to the community by creating an internship program aimed at employing, training, mentoring, and educating Temecula youth and exposing them to the local manufacturing sector. And whereas the manufacturing industry is a critical component of Temecula's ecosystem, in 2017, a total of 244 manufacturing companies employed over 5,000 people. And whereas in 2016, the average manufacturing worker in California earned over $100,000 annually, including pay and benefits, compared to the average worker in all industries who earned nearly half that. And whereas, taken alone, the manufacturing in the United States would be the ninth-largest economy in the world with $2.1 trillion in value added for manufacturing in 2014. Only eight other nations, including the United States, would rank higher in terms of their gross domestic product. And whereas, according to the National Association of Manufacturers, for every $1 spent in manufacturing, another $1.89 is added to the economy, the highest multiplier effect of any economic sector. Now therefore, I, Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim October 9, 2018 to be National Manufacturing Day. Good evening."
Hello. So, I have some members of the Manufacturing Council with me, so I will let them introduce themselves, their company, how long they've been in Temecula, and what they manufacture, because we have a lot of cool things being made here in Temecula. I do wanna recognize Alice Sullivan with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. She is a critical component to the Manufacturing Council and their success, so shout out to Alice at home, yes. And Bob? Do you wanna, Bob Share is our co-chairman for the Manufacturer Council this year, so he'll say a couple of things, and then you guys can introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you for the honor of being here again this evening. We're very excited about manufacturing here in Temecula. We, on the Southwest California Manufacturing Council, submit that manufacturing is the best-kept secret in town. Now, you guys here in the City Council may have other secrets, but manufacturing certainly is the best-kept secret that we have. What many people don't realize is that world-class products are made right here in Temecula, and that in fact, there are many companies, several companies, large companies, that have moved into the Temecula area over the past few years. So we're very excited about their participation in the Manufacturing Council and certainly their contribution to the community. With all the kids here today, one of our commitments is to provide an opportunity for the kids, as I shouldn't say kids, the children, as they grow up and consider what they wanna do for the future, our commitment is to provide them an opportunity to consider manufacturing right here in town as a way of being able to make and establish a good career for themselves. I'm very happy that Councilman Stewart is a member of our team and a big contributor to the efforts that we have. And so, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'm also here this evening representing my company, which is Tension Envelope. We've been here in town 24 years, part of a 133-year-old organization, and I was just thinking about it the other day, this year, we've made 1.5 billion envelopes, and so they all came right here from Temecula. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.[1247.33][1247.33][applause]
Thank you. My name is Michael Medors. My company is Pacific Barcode Label Printing Solutions. We are a label manufacturer. We also sell service and support printing equipment that those labels go into around the world. Quite a bit is made here in Temecula. Thanks.[1269.58][1269.58][applause]
Well, my name is Arun Sinha, and I work for Opto22, and we are a manufacturer of industrial automation systems. So we make systems that monitor, control factories and machines, and we're very happy to be part of the Manufacturing Council. We've been in Temecula since 1991, started in 1974 in Huntington Beach and moved here in 91. So, you know, our company is privately owned, second generation, and has resisted the temptation to outsource and has kept manufacturing in Southern California, which is a hard thing to do, but has, you know, decided to do that, and it's proven to be a way to stay profitable and stay resilient in the economy that we have. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jan Refstall. I'm with Optiforms here in Temecula. We were actually born in a garage here in Temecula over 30 years ago, and today, we occupy a 60,000-square-foot facility, and we employ 57 people. Although, many of you may not be familiar with us, if you go to Las Vegas and you've seen the Luxor Hotel, you've seen the lights that come out of the Luxor Hotel. We build the reflectors for those. We also light up the Eiffel Tower in Paris, we light up the Kennedy Space Center, and so we have worldwide business that operates right out of here, right here in Temecula. At any rate, I'm co-chair of the Manufacturing Council, and we certainly appreciate this recognition. We're very active in the community and try to, as Bob was saying, engage with the young people and get them interested in manufacturing. So we host tours on a regular basis, and we also bring in kids for summer internships. Thank you very much.[1377.85][1377.85][applause]
Gentlemen, thanks for sharing all that you folks do, and you know what? I don't think it's really on a lot of people's radar how much manufacturing goes on right here in Temecula. It's amazing that some of the work you do, we look at every day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would you like to take a photo? Sure. That's good.
Mr. Mayor, while they're taking the photo, I wanna repeat something that was said and make sure all the students realize. People who work in manufacturing earn an average of $100,000 per year, as opposed to people in the regular work sector, workforce, that earn an average of $50,000 a year. So I don't know if you wanna turn your thoughts towards manufacturing, but from a financial standpoint, I think it's a great idea.
Can I say something?
And I think to conclude, sorry, sir, we have a short video on our Manufacturing Council as well.
I'm Justin Andrews. I run Ambio, and we're a laboratory equipment asset manager. We specialize in moving equipment from all over the country, and we centralize here in Temecula for our equipment to be redistributed back out to organizations who participate in a reuse program. We started in 2010, actually, in a really small 500-square-foot space in the back of someone's warehouse. Since then, we've gone through two or three buildings here in Temecula, and we're at 20,000 square feet. We love Temecula. It's a place where you're still close to the outdoors, close enough to the cities, and you don't have to worry about a big, long commute. All my employees, a lot of them started when they got hired, they would live in North County or in Irvine, and then they ended up moving to Temecula just because it's nice here. It's great because I can find high-quality technicians that live in this area. You wouldn't know it, but Temecula actually has an absolute ton of high-tech support. So, we do a lot of repairs for high-tech equipment, and we're able to find the support refrigeration, we can get various parts just down the street. There's a lot of biotech and pharmaceutical in this area. Ambio may not be a manufacturer, but we're here to support the manufacturers, and we're glad to call Temecula home.
So Opto22 was founded in 1974 in Huntington Beach, California, and as the business began to flourish, we just ran out of manufacturing space. So we started looking for places that we could build a new manufacturing facility, and also was a great home for our approximately 160 employees at the time. So the products that we make here at Opto22 are primarily, early on, were the computer-based automation systems from machines like the hot dog cooker you see in a 7-Eleven, to the pump controls that are used to power the Bellagio fountains in Las Vegas. These products are all used for automation of industrial processes, packaging machines, commercial buildings, remote sites like cell towers, oil rigs, or water pumping stations, and they also find their way into retail outlets like airports and amusement parks and much more. We have over four decades of experience with an installed base numbering in the millions at thousands of customers all over the world, and we're best known in the industry for mission-critical, highly-reliable systems backed by lifetime guarantees on all of our components. All of our products are built right here in this Temecula headquarters building. So when we were looking for a place to relocate, we certainly were looking for an area that was minimal to manufacturing, and Temecula fit the bill for that. But also, what was important was the quality of life for our 160 employees. It was important that we found an area that offered terrific schools, low crime, affordable housing, and really, a city in which we all could grow in. And of course, Temecula came through there as well.
Hi, my name's Dane Stevenson. I'm the VP of Sales Marketing Operations for QC Manufacturing. We're also known as Quiet Cool. We manufacture the Quiet Cool Whole House Fans and attic ventilators as well. So we produce the Quiet Cool Whole House Fans. What it is, is actual a whole-house fan. How it all began is we kinda reinvented the mousetrap of a traditional whole-house fan. So a traditional whole-house fan, you guys have probably seen them, they've been around since the 1950s and 60s. They move a lot of air, they sound like a jet helicopter plane right above you. But, so what we kinda did is we took that idea, and then we just improved all the negatives behind it. The damper system, the energy efficiency, the noise level, basically every feature that was negative about it, and we turned it around and have made an amazing product line that has helped us with huge, tremendous success. So the past 30 years, I've grown up here in Temecula, and it's like home to me. It's just a great place to grow up and raise a family. This is just a very unique place, that there's pretty much nothing like it in Southern California. So we decided to run our operations here, because we've been around here for so long, and it feels like home. We just couldn't figure out a place that would be better off for us. So now, we're gonna be opening up a 162,000-square-foot manufacturing facility right off Winchester and Yunnes.
All right, well, thank you so much.[1698.08][1698.08][applause] All right. Next up, I'm, oh, Stu, yeah.
Okay, so this was one of the first groups I joined when I became a city councilman, was the Manufacturers Council. And I'll tell you what, talk about the best-kept secret, it truly is, because, I don't know if you guys noticed, there's 240 manufacturers in this town. So that's a lot, and it varies from very simple stuff to very complicated stuff. I took a tour of Abbott just the other day, and that's where the complication comes in. But even the Optic, Jan's company, I can't remember what it's called again, Optiform. We just couldn't figure out a place that would be better off for us. So, now, we're going to be opening up 162,000-square-foot manufacturing facility right off Winchester and Yonex.[547.04][547.04](music)
All right. Well, thank you so much.[550.04][550.04](applause) All right. Next up, I'm... Oh, Stu.
Yeah. Okay. So, this was one of the first groups I joined when I became a city councilman, was the Manufacturers' Council. And I'll tell you what, talk about the best-kept secret. It truly is, because I don't know if you guys noticed, there's 240 manufacturers in this town. So, that's a lot. And it varies from very simple stuff to very complicated stuff. I took a tour of Abbott just the other day, and that's where the complication comes in. But even the Optic, Jan's company, I can't remember what it's called again, Optiform. You know, the lenses, I mean, they're ground down to absolute perfection. And so, there's a lot of opportunities for kids who are not necessarily college-bound to find a job locally, making a decent wage, where you can actually buy a house one day. So, please consider, you know, once you get out of school, if you don't think you want to go to college, check out one of these manufacturers. And there's some really, really cool ones out there that do some absolutely amazing things. In fact, most of them do some pretty amazing things right here in this valley. So, please, take the opportunity to just even go visit these companies. So, it is a best-kept secret, but it's really, really a great opportunity for a lot of you out there, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Now, I'm looking at you, Mr. Goldman. We have a presentation by our friends at Southern California Edison regarding your wildfire mitigation programs. Good evening.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me plug our Edison Scholars to all the students out here first, though. The application period for our Edison scholarships is open. Go to edison.com/community. Four-year scholarship worth $40,000. We had a student from Temecula win probably three, four years ago, so went to Gradow High School. So, take a look, make sure to apply. So, it's a great program. So, thank you. I wanted to chat today, give you an update on the wildfire mitigation efforts that Edison is undertaking. So, we hear the term a lot, the new normal, the year-round fire season, 365. Here in the region, we've had two fires recently, both the Holy Fire and the Cranston Fire. Both impacted Edison facilities, number of customers without power for seven, eight days in the Cranston Fire. So, it's something that while we've been working and looking at, what can we do to help mitigate the effects of wildfire and prevent them as best we can? So, we have four core areas that we're really looking at and focusing on, operational practices, looking at red flag warnings, system hardening, upgrading different types of equipment throughout our circuits and high-fire areas, creating a whole new situational awareness center, staff 24/7 with meteorologists and other staff, and just enhancing our operational practices. Talk a lot about our public safety power shut-off, which we enacted in Idlewild last year, where if we deem the threat credible enough, we'll actually turn the power off. So, we'll touch on a little more of these throughout. So, first off, a system hardening. You can see to the top right that covered conductor. That's something we're going to be installing in high-fire areas throughout our service territory. We actually just installed some on the way out to Anza off the 371. So, if you want to take a look at that, it's just gone in over the last month or so. Also, changing out the different types of structures and poles, fire-resistant poles made out of fiberglass. So, we're looking at all types of technology, anything that's out there, it's on the table. So, we're exploring everything right now. Also, vegetation management. We have a number of arborists in-house. We inspect almost a million trees a year. With the Cranston Fire, we actually had to take out almost 400 trees before our crews could go in there and make those repairs. At Cranston Fire, we had 130 of our poles that were damaged in remote areas. So, last year, we removed almost 40,000 trees. Also, I talked about new technology. We're looking at light detection and ranging technology, LiDAR. That's where we'll fly an area with a helicopter or a drone, and we'll be able to see using our laser technology where, you know, what type of trees might need to be trimmed in certain areas. So, like I said, we're looking at everything. Trees and power lines don't mix. We're also adding weather stations on a number of these circuits, so folks in our situational awareness center can take a look, look at the heat index, the humidity, seeing, look at the wind speed, what's really going on. I mentioned the situational awareness center. We have a team of meteorologists working 24/7, you know, just looking at the weather, looking at the red flag warnings or anything abnormal that they're seeing. We've also added a number of fire monitoring cameras throughout the territory. We just added one on the Santiago Peak literally a week before the Holy Fire happened. I have a picture, I'll show you on the next slide. And same thing with advanced weather modeling, look at all types of technology that's out there. So, this is actually from the Holy Fire, and you can see right on top of the Santiago Peak. Fire authorities are also able to access our cameras and making, moving around, film at different angles. Also, the public's able to access them. I'll send out the website so you can take a look as well, so. So, in the event that we deem the threat credible enough, we'll enact what we call our Public Safety Power Shut-Off. And this is where we'll actually turn the power, de-energize the circuits until we deem the threat as passed. And we'll be working with the local authorities on this. We'll be contacting our city contacts, public safety contacts. We'll have folks on the ground. We feel that we can give folks at least two days' notice in the event that this might take place. I know up in Idlewild last year, it was about a day's notice, but we feel, given what we've seen, what we've implemented, that we can do better. We can give you two days' notice if that does happen. This is an absolute last resort. We've done this twice in 15 years, both times in Idlewild nonetheless, last year and then in 2003 due to bark beetles. So, it's something we've always had on the table. We envision throughout the service territory, this could be used between two and nine times. So, it's not something that we're going to be doing every day. So, like I said, there's a lot of factors that happen, real-time conditions. We'll actually send our patrolmen out, patrolling the area, folks who know the area, looking at the weather patterns. We'll be talking to your public safety personnel. And just because we say it could happen, you know, we give the notifications that two days out that this might happen, it's still possible that a day out, we could say, you know what, this is cleared up, it's not going to happen. So, we'd rather be overly cautious than actually implement it, so. So, you can see that the timeline here, so from four to seven days ahead, that's when our meteorologists will be looking. And maybe they do see something that's abnormal, maybe they see something that they haven't seen out there. Then, three days ahead, that's when they'll start calling our first responders, that hey, there's something going on here in, you know, French Valley or Temecula that we might have to really de-energize. And two days out, that's when we would start notifying customers in those circuits that are impacted. One thing I will say to everyone watching at home is to please go to sc.com and update your contact info, so in the event that we do have to contact you for anything, we have your latest information. So, again, we're back to the slide. Again, we're in constant contact with the city, with public safety. We've activated our IMT Incident Management Team, and we're also doing regular updates to city staff and to our customers. So, then eventually, if we did have to de-energize, we would do that power shut-off and then ultimately restore once the threat has passed. I know in Idlewild last year, the power was out for 30 hours, and the question that we got constantly is, when are you going to turn it back on? Well, we're going to turn it back on once, once the wind dies down, and two, once we've made all repairs, to bring our customers back up safely. And that's all I had. More than happy to chat more in depth in the future if you'd like, but I wanted to be as brief as possible, so.
Mr. Mayor. Jeremy, before you leave, as you probably know, I interact quite a bit with the folks in Anza.
Yes.
And the reports that we got back from them during the Cranston Fire, and then a little bit further down the hill, where you set up your command center, I'm not sure what the terminology was, but...
Camp Edison is what they call it.
Some of the Anza folks said that it was like a whole city, and they were tremendously appreciative of what Edison did. Just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Thank you. No, we've heard that, and we had almost 400 crew members on the mountain, working to get the power back up there for about seven days straight.
That's well done.
Mike?
Just real quickly, Jeremy, I'm going to bring up something during council comments you may be interested in that sort of pertains to this.
Great.
All right. Any others? Well, all right. Jeremy, thank you on behalf of the city council, and of course, all your colleagues at Edison for doing an outstanding job of not just providing us the power, but making sure we're safe. So, appreciate the update. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.[1128.33][1128.33](applause) Looking to see, do we have any public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment from Mark Caton.
All right. Mark, good evening. Have to read the rules for you, though, not that you haven't heard this before. But total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak for may be filled out and filed with city clerk prior to city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on agenda, request to speak for may be filed with city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. In that case, each speaker is limited to five minutes. You've got three minutes, sir. How are you doing this evening?
Terrific. Wow. Yes, I have heard it a few times. Okay. Well, in keeping with the theme Temecula Safe, I just wanted to remind the public, and especially the thousands of viewers at home that are watching tonight, that the City of Temecula Safety Fair is happening on October 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00. The Temecula Education Foundation has partnered with the city to present Touch a Truck. So, we sort of tagged in on this one, but all the fire trucks are there, the police vehicles are there. It's just a great event, especially for children that see these trucks on the freeway or driving around, but they don't ever get to see and touch and find out what those vehicles do. So, at this event, they will be able to do that. They can sit in the driver's seat of any of those vehicles, honk the horns. It should be a lot of fun, and it's free. So, it should be a lot of fun. 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. is quiet time, so there'll be an hour where the trucks are silent, there's no horns and things like that going on. So, for any young children that are affected by loud noises or can, you know, need to be special circumstances, we'll have that quiet hour. But I just want to thank the city for working with us or letting us work with them. But it should be a nice event, a fun event, and free. So, the 20th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00. Thanks so much.[1278.12][1278.12](applause)
All right. Thank you. No other comments? All right. Mr. Nagar?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe Mr. Heslin, could you put this up on the overhead for me real quick?[1286.12][1286.12](pause) Thank you. About a year ago, maybe a little less, we had some visitors from the Temecula Valley Garden Club come here, and they were concerned, and this was about a year ago, this was before the recent fires, they were concerned about fires that had been destroying the national forests. And so, they have a program that's sponsored by the National Forest Service that they decided to get involved in called Penny Pines. And for approximately, I forgot the amount, $100, $150, you can purchase, and the National Forest Service will plant enough pine trees to fit on 160 acres. And that's why they call it Penny Pines. So, they challenged us because they had received some positive support from Murrieta, and we turned around, and I said, you know what? We'll go ahead and we'll buy three packages, and that's what we did. And I went ahead and was able to raise the money. If you can go ahead and put that over the overhead. So, I did three of them. This one was dedicated all special needs children of Temecula. I did another one for autism awareness, and I did another one on behalf of all citizens of Temecula. And now, recently, we've had the Holy Fire. And a couple of thoughts came to me. We don't really want to extend our reach because it's not in our neighborhood, per se, but this is a fantastic program, and I can think of nowhere better to implement it than out in that Lake Elsinore area if they wanted to. And so, maybe perhaps we can start a movement. And that's what I'm saying. Mr. Goldman, with all that Edison has done, maybe perhaps help in some revegetation in a manner like this. But I think it's incumbent to reach out to our colleagues out in Lake Elsinore to see if they have any sort of will of partnering, doing something like this. Obviously, we're not going to go out to the Lake Elsinore area and say Temecula's doing this project, but certainly, it's a worthwhile cause. And just for pennies, we can begin, I guess, restoring that area, which is going to be in our backyards for generations to come, so why not get on top of that? So, that's my first item. And I want to thank the Temecula Valley Garden Club for bringing that to us. The second thing I want to mention is something that Mayor Ron and I are involved in, and that's Move Temecula Forward. We started this task force to start to study how we can begin to work on the traffic problem that's on the 15 freeway. Keeping in mind, it's not a Temecula problem, cities don't necessarily build freeways, and it's not only Temecula citizens on that freeway, it's everybody going to Paris and Hemet and Murrieta and Lake Elsinore, and everybody's working in San Diego passing through here. But it's become a problem, and so, we decided to form a task force. The council approved that task force, appointed Mayor Ron and I to be on that task force, and we invited other cities to participate. Sorry for being regurgitating all this, but a lot of people may not know what's going on. So, we've been meeting for about a year now, and a lot of positive things and information has come out of that, and I think it's important that we report it to the city council. First and foremost, by legislation, Caltrans is no longer a capacity-building agency. They've stated that. It is done by legislation. They are a maintenance organization. So, petitioning Caltrans, who is in charge of the state's freeways, to build more freeway lanes is not going to happen. By legislation, that is not their charter anymore. In fact, what their charter is now, and that legislation says, is that they've now put the onus of building the capacity onto the respective cities. So, that's literally what they've said. So, they, in our case, Temecula, if you don't like what's happening on the I-15, do something about it. Well, to make freeway improvements is a monumental monetary task. No one city can handle it. So, that came out of it. But we also headed down a path where we needed to start to examine, what was the problem? Was it a capacity problem only, more cars and not enough lanes? So, the group of elected officials, and I might add, we have elected officials from Elsinore, Wildemar, Murrieta, Menifee, Canyon Lake, do we have Hemet? I think we, no, we don't have Hemet on there. Who am I missing? The county? Senator Jeff Stone's office? Who am I missing, Mayor? Caltrans?
Department of Defense.
Department of Defense, the Pachanga Indians, the Palau Indians. I mean, this is a very big group diving into this. And we got together and we paid for data, particularly, I believe, with cellphone data primarily, just data of people traveling back and forth, much like your map data works on your smartphone. And in gathering that data, a report was generated that says, you know what, as of today, there's enough capacity on that freeway. The problem is all the maneuvering. The problem is people coming up over the hill from the south, the trucks that take a while to get up to speed, the Y that people get on our on-ramps and try to maneuver to get over to the left to go to the 15, or maneuver the opposite direction to go to the 215. All of these movements of trying to cross the freeway is what's causing a lot of the congestion, because it typically eases up once you pass the Y. So, I'm giving you all of this background information. We had a meeting last Thursday in which Caltrans followed up on a previous meeting in which they told us there's nothing they're going to do, but they came back with a plan. Lo and behold, Caltrans came up with a plan that listed about five items that was priced out at about $15 million, that included some things that would drastically increase the capacity, or rather, yeah, I guess you would call it capacity, such things as adding a dedicated lane for truck traffic, so they can get up to speed from the weigh station and don't have to necessarily hold up traffic as they're coming up the hill, acceleration lanes to get on at all of our on-ramps going in both directions. They came up with, let's see, what am I missing? Pardon?
The lighting meters?
The metering of the ramps. And there was maybe one or two other suggestions, again, priced out at about $15 million. Now, here's an interesting thing. Caltrans says that since they're no longer a capacity organization, but a maintenance one, they're willing to fund all this. That was fantastic. They figure that if they program it in their next programming cycle, they'll have the funding for that in eight years. Okay? That's what they said. And so, when asked the question, well, once you get the funding, then you're going to start, that doesn't mean they're going to start breaking ground, it means they start all the environmental work, start the plans, start everything that goes along with getting ready to work. How long will it take you once you have the money? Their response was two or three years. So, left alone, it'll take Caltrans approximately 11 to 12 years just to do these interim fixes. Okay? So, follow me so far. In the meantime, and I know, Mr. Mayor, I'm taking up a lot of time, but this is important. In the meantime, there's a ballot measure, I believe it's Prop 6, okay, that is moving to recall the gas tax. Now, if you voted to remove the gas tax, I wouldn't blame you one iota, okay? Nobody likes to be taxed, and it is very high. In the meantime, and I know, Mr. Mayor, I'm taking up a lot of time, but this is important. In the meantime, there's a ballot measure, I believe it's Prop 6, okay, that is moving to recall the gas tax. Now, if you voted to remove the gas tax, I wouldn't blame you one iota, okay? Nobody likes to be taxed, and it is very high. But that tax is going to road improvements. That tax, the City of Temecula has about $100 million on the line if that gets repealed. That money was going to go to start the next phase of the French Valley Parkway. So, I wanted to make the connection for you, if you live in Temecula and you go to vote on that item, if that SB 1, that gas tax gets overturned, we lose $100 million, and we have to go search somewhere for the French Valley Parkway money. But I digress. Going back to the interim fixes that Caltrans brought up, it's about a $15 million affair. And if we had the money, it would take us about anywhere from two to three years for that work to begin, once they got the money. So, we can take it down from 11 years down to three years. So, I wanted to update my colleagues. Mayor Ron has done a fantastic job of chairing this committee, which is a wild bunch, because it's elected from all over the region. And so, I want to compliment you on that. But, Mr. City Manager, we already talked after that, this is nothing new. We have to find a way to cobble that money together. Obviously, Temecula shouldn't pay all of this, but somehow or another, we need to go searching for that money and get it, if we're going to bring any sort of relief in any manner whatsoever that is timely. We did bring up, again, I'm speaking to my colleagues here, what if we, a group of us fronted the money? Could we count on Caltrans to pay us back in eight years? They said, "Yeah." Okay, that would probably work. Of course, a lot of things would have to be worked out. So, I bring everybody up to speed, including you out there watching on TV and in the audience, and Mr. City Manager. I see a little smirk on your face, because I know you very well. I'm telling you to go out and find a way, either here or regionally, to get $15 million bucks, so that we can start road improvements in three years and not 11. And if anything came out of our task force, that's probably the most valuable thing. My last comment is that we're still not done. I mean, you've got Mayor Ron going to Washington, lobbying our lobbyists and talking to our congressmen, and there's a lot of other work going on to try to find money, but that's the efforts that we've been into. And frankly, you know, we didn't know what we would find when we started, we only knew we needed to start. And in starting, this is what we found out, and I think that's pretty good news. $15 million bucks in the scheme of city things, when you look at our interchange, what's our total cost for the interchange? About $50 million. When you look at the $50 million interchange, you look at $15 million, giving us the capacity we need, it's relatively not a lot of money, relatively. So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to communicate that to everybody, I wanted to communicate it to staff, and however you want to proceed with that, Mr. Adams, future talks with Mr. Ron and I. Mr. Mayor, I see Mr. Butler held his finger up, and I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Let's go over to Greg real quick.
Quick follow-up on that. I know Pat's followed up with Caltrans, and we actually have a meeting on Thursday to continue those discussions and to explore funding opportunities.
Great.
Great job, committee.
All right. Any other reports from the council? All right, I just have two items, but everybody talked about them already, so, no, Mike, thank you. You know, really good report there. I think, you know, I have to say that it's been a good effort to grab all these cities, get them together, for us to all look, you know, six cities to agree, along with two tribes, federal and state agencies, to all agree that we're going to advocate for something basically in our backyard. You know, our biggest argument or conversation piece with the other cities was, you know, our findings from the study that Mike alluded to basically suggest or demonstrated that the City of Temecula contributes about 6% to 8% of the total traffic to the freeway on any given day. And so, it's all these other cities, their residents, that are sitting, you know, stuck in traffic, waiting to get home at the beginning of the, or the end of the day, or waiting to get to work in the morning. And so, it's incumbent on them to partner, and it demonstrates, I think, a good opportunity for us as a region to really come together to solve these large-scale problems, because, you know, they're here for us today, we will be there for them tomorrow, when we're advocating for their transportation, other infrastructure needs. So, I think we've started something really unique in the region, and we're off to the races, and we've seen some good success. And I have to say, in such a short period of time of this committee or this task force meeting, to see the kind of response we have and the urgency from Caltrans at our last meeting, and really wanting to work with us to find some solutions, and really, you know, do it in a way that, you know, we fix the freeways for, you know, today's problems, not, you know, our kids' problems 20 years from now. So, it was really a great conversation. Look forward to reporting back to you all on the progress with this. And then, I did have a slide, if we could pull that up real quick, but this was, thank you, Mark. This is basically everything Mark said earlier, too. Temecula Safe theme this year, and we are kicking off another event on the 20th that Mark filled us in on, and so, hope to see everybody there, bring your kids out, and have a wonderful, wonderful morning learning about public safety in our city. So, hope to see everybody there. All right. Let's see, moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from consent for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve action minutes of September 25, 2018. Four, adopt ordinance 18-09, an amendment to the City of Temecula Development Code establishing an affordable housing overlay zone ordinance that would allow for the development of affordable housing projects on 44 parcels throughout the city. This is the second reading. Five is adopt ordinance 18-10, an amendment to the City of Temecula Development Code updating city density bonus ordinance to conform to density bonus law, Government Code Section 65915. This also is its second reading. Item number six, approve annual licensing of Microsoft software from Soft Choice Corporation. Number seven, approve a purchase and installation agreement with Helix Storm, Inc., for the expansion of the storage area network. Eight, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Farr and Peers, Inc., for Old Town Parking Management Plan Update. Number nine, approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Kaiser Marston Associates, Inc., for the Affordable Housing RFP Review and Developer Selection. Item number 10, approve an agreement with North County Ford for a purchase of 11 2019 Ford Escape SE four-wheel-drive vehicles. Item 11, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Hicks and Hartwick, Inc., for Engineering Plan Check Services. 12, accept improvements and file notice of completion for the Temecula Children's Museum Roof Rehabilitation, PW 16-02. And finally, 13, receive and file temporary street closures for the 2018 Winterfest events.
Move approval of consent.
And a second, please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 5-0. I'm going to let Mr. Comacherow take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we'll dispense with the reading then. Under consent calendar, we have only one item. Item 14, approve the action minutes of September 25, 2018. We have a motion and a second. That motion does carry unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Hawkins?
President, just a quick thank you from the Hawkins family, to the Temecula family for your prayers and support during this recent period. You have really touched our hearts, unfortunately, once again, but we truly appreciate you. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams?
Nothing further than that, Mr. President.
Any board member comments, director comments? Seeing none, we'll have to take a motion to adjourn to October 23rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, it's 5-0. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, let's go ahead and reconvene Temecula City Council. Item up, number 15, consider approval of formal economic development strategy at the request of Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Niggar. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let me introduce our Economic Development Team, who are all present here this evening. We've got our ED manager, Christine Damco, is going to do a quick review of the proposed economic development strategy, but she brought with her the rest of our ED team sitting down here in the front row. We've got Charles Walker, he's here, you guys all know Charles. We've got Keith Puckett. We've got our newest member, our social media specialist, Brandy. And then, Courtney is here with us as well. So, Christine, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you walk us through our proposed ED strategy.
Sounds awesome. Just wanted to give a shout-out to my team. Good job, you guys rock. So, before we move forward on talking about the proposed strategy and incentives, we wanted to step back and talk about what we have been doing up to now. So, here are our current ED activities. We manage business attraction, business retention, public information, business ombudsman, the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, youth education, youth employment, all under economic development. So, just wanted to briefly talk about some of our strategies that we are currently doing. First off is business retention. We spend a lot of time on business retention. It is much easier to retain and grow what we already have invested in our city versus trying to go out and get another abit. So, on a regular basis, Temecula Valley Chamber President and I, Alice Sullivan, we do business site walks. So, we call each other up, park our car, and randomly, literally, walk into businesses and talk to them. And it's amazing how much you find out and the relationships that you create from that. We do partnership with individual sectors. The sectors all have their individual personalities and needs. We have a manufacturing council that you saw earlier. We have auto dealers appreciation lunch. We created a craft brewers guild. We have a very, very strong involvement with our Chamber of Commerce. We're launching a shop, small shop Temecula campaign in November. Along with that, we do have resources and connections to help our business community, primarily with the SBDC. It's a Small Business Development Center. Paul Nolte is our contact. He has an office at the TVE2. And here at the city, we can assist with permitting and walking you through the process, but if you want hardcore information about your business and how to grow your business, the SBDC has a ton of resources for that. We also partnered with the county's workforce development as well. And then, on the city end, we do offer ombudsman services. So, we will introduce businesses that need permitting, we'll introduce them to our fire department or community development department as well. So, business attraction, we really have two different arms for business attraction. We have retail attraction and sustainable jobs attraction. Retail, we not only consider ourselves a tourist destination, but we consider ourselves a retail destination for the valley. And we partner with an analytics company called Buxton, and they dive deep into our demographics, and they provide us consumer behavior information that we're able to take on and use that information and present it to retailers we're trying to attract. We have a presence at ICSC. I know our ED committee has been with us a few times, past few years. And then, our most beneficial business attractor is our relationships. Shout-out to Jeff Kurtz, the general manager at the Promenade Mall. We have a great relationship with the Promenade Mall and our commercial brokers. They are the boots on the ground, and so, we're constantly working with them on potential tenants. On the job side, we have the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, so we are fostering startups there as well. The partnerships with the commercial brokers is also huge on this side, especially filling our industrial buildings. We are constantly meeting with brokers and their potential clients on filling a potential industrial building. We do do some trade shows. Most common one is MD&amp;M, our Medical Device and Manufacturing Trade Show. That's in January, February each year. It's the largest medical device trade show on the West Coast. And we do some marketing. And then, most recently, we have partnered with the Economic Development Coalition. It's a regional marketing arm, along with our other cities to the north of us, and we really started conversations about how do we market the region in terms of job creation? So, those conversations have just started. Over at the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, that's where Charles is housed. It's one half of the first floor is a regional resource center. So, we have tons of free workshops and seminars that are not just open to Temecula businesses, but for any business in the region. And we also, there, we have the free one-on-one business consultations. On the other side of the incubator, on the other side of the TV2, we have the incubator. Currently, we have 10 startup companies, and that is a great place, not only because they do get reduced rent, but the connections that they get from being there, they get a free chamber membership, and also the synergy that is created. All the companies have different products, but they all have the same mission. They're all starting up, and they're trying to grow and survive. So, communications, communications is also part of economic development. So, what does Temecula look like visually? So, if you've never been to Temecula and you just see an ad, you just see a PowerPoint presentation, how does Temecula look? So, we are part of creating that, and that is both internally and externally. So, we want to visually show what Temecula is all about, so we spent a time on that. And then, also, the external communication is, pretty much the past year, we've been focusing on social media. So, we boosted up our social media presence, we have good news of the week, we're taking our news, and we're distributing now the good news. Pay attention to our cable TV station, monthly e-blasts, but we have not forgotten the importance of relationship building, so we have kept that alive as well. Youth workforce, Charles has done a great job with many, many of his programs. They are both educational and workforce training. And so, the recent example, if you've been to last month, the 10th Annual College and Vocational Fair held at the Promenade Mall, literally, over 10,000 people attend, 300 colleges and university and trade schools, the largest of its kind. Workforce, a ton of internship programs that get young people prepared for jobs. So, this is our current ED toolbox. So, when businesses come to the City of Temecula, this is what we currently have to offer. So, we actually have one of the lowest business license fee in California. It's $39, and actually, four of those $39 is a state requirement, so it's technically $36, and that's for any business. So, if you're abit, 201 person, at-home business is $39, which is very, very low. We have no utility users tax here. We offer ombudsman services. As a former planner, we're able to walk you through the process and introduce you to the right people within the city. We do have site selection assistance, so we purchase a software program that allows us to pull vacant building space and vacant land space and pass that along to the potential business. Fast-track permitting are specific plans, the Old Town specific plan and the Uptown Temecula specific plan, they do have special allowances. So, for example, in Old Town, there's a hotel overlay. In Uptown, there, you can build higher, you know, higher number of floors than what's typically allowed in the city. And then, we have an auto dealer incentive. So, one question, I'm sure the city council has heard this before as well, that we pretty much get every single time we meet with a potential business, is what incentives, and they always say financial, does the city offer to help potential developers choose Temecula? That is a very, very common question that we get. Coupled with that, we know that land in Temecula is scarce, but we still have desired uses and businesses that we want here in Temecula. So, we asked the question ourselves, are incentives appropriate to ensure that we get the most desired uses here? So, we actually met with the Economic Development Subcommittee, we met with them twice. We met with them twice, Jeff Comachero, Mary Ann Edwards, and really took direction from the committee. And we drafted an economic development strategy. And these are the five goals. We connected them to the Quality of Life Master Plan. And so you can read them here. And along with the strategy, we had the conversation of incentives. And the retailers, the businesses that we wanted are used to playing in the pool of dealing with financial incentives. So we talked about that. We also talked about relating to incentives, direct versus indirect impact and benefits relating to the city. So we really wanted to focus on creating direct impacts that benefit. So in terms of if someone is building a new restaurant, so the taxes that are created from the restaurant would benefit the city. While they're building the restaurant, they could say, well, you know, there's 50 construction workers and the 50 construction workers all go out to lunch. That's an indirect benefit. Well, that's kind of, we're not sure if they all go out to lunch and spend money in the city. So we really focused on the direct impact. Fiscal versus service, the rate of return. And we really wanted to focus on targeting specific industries or uses. So with the Subcommittee's direction, the Subcommittee was supportive of our strategy goals. They realized, and we all realized, that Temecula is a hot market right now, and so it's something to be aware of. But they also said that it's time to take it to the next level when we recruit businesses and retailers. And the term luxury and high-end kept coming up. Temecula is so fortunate to have a ton of industry and retailers and business. But in order to get to that next level, we have to provide, we have to do more. We have to provide some incentives, financial. So underneath the Subcommittee's direction of raising the bar, we put together a list of targeted sectors. And you can see luxury and high-end is very common again, but you can see them here. Boutique four-star diamond rated hotel, a luxury grocer, luxury department store, high-end steakhouse, high-end sports entertainment complex, high-end electronics store, luxury auto dealers, and high-end furniture and home decor. So what does those, what do those industries look like? I'll name drop here. This is an example of what these industries look like. So if any of these industries are watching right now, they can give us a call. So in the quest of getting the next level of desired industry, we came up with three different incentives. So I will explain the three different incentives. The first one is the auto dealer incentive. This is actually an existing incentive that we are using to lure auto dealers as we speak. The council previously saw this auto dealer incentive earlier this year. It was connected to the Audi fee agreement. And what it is, it's a fee reimbursement program. It is available to new and expanding auto dealers, but is performance-based. So after a year that the dealership has been open, they can be reimbursed up to 75% of their new annual sales, $250,000 maximum, and the 1.75% of project cost. You may ask yourself, this is kind of a weird number. That is driven by the California Labor Code and the Department of Industrial Relations. And so our city attorney has advised us to put that requirement in there. You'll see this requirement reiterated and the additional, the other incentives. Basically, a city incentive can't go over 1.75% of the project cost. If it does, then that kicks in prevailing wages. And so oftentimes, prevailing wages will balloon the construction costs for the developer, which they typically don't want to do. So as we move on, our second incentive is for four-star diamond hotels. In the city, we currently, besides Pachanga, we do not have any four-star diamond hotels in the city limits. And so in order to get that type of development, we are creating a proposed incentive. Again, it's a revenue sharing program. So this, it would share the city's portion of the transit occupancy tax. So right now, the city has an 8% TOT. So the sharing program would be 4% of that. It would be for a fixed period of time, and it would not be extended. It is performance-based as well. So if the hotel brings in a million dollars in TOT, it would get half that amount. It is a time-sensitive incentive, so we would require that a certificate of occupancy be granted within 18 months. They are not able, they should not be able to sit on this incentive or the development. And the, again, the actual rebates will be based on the actual TOT remitted. And the rating, so we want to ensure that the hotel does not dip below in rating. So the rating would be confirmed by a third party. So this is the eligibility for the hotel incentive policy. It targets new buildings, or if an existing hotel wanted to do a major renovation, we would also look at that as well, to four-star diamond or higher hotels. And that is per the JD Power or AAA or similar rated company that standardly rates hotels. These are the mandatory requirements that are associated with a four-star hotel. And this is the application process. So a letter of request, the third-party certification of the anticipating rating, the feasibility analysis. The feasibility analysis, making sure that this is a good investment, that this hotel is going to be able to survive. The operating performance, the project development cost, identifying the funding gap, and the developer to fund the independent peer review by the city consultant. You'll see this government code here on this slide. That is just, that is just a requirement that requires the incentive to move forward and be approved by the city council at a public hearing, basically saying that we can't make deals in the back corner without letting the public know. And then what I mentioned earlier about the auto dealers incentive, that 1.75%, it's the same here. So again, according to the Department of Industrial Relations and the California Labor Code, that the incentive cannot go over 1.75%, otherwise it will trigger the project into prevailing wage. While we were discussing this incentive, we met with our partners, our tourism partners, Visit Temecula Valley, and we asked them about this incentive, and then also wanted to gauge about the current tourism market. Now, the summertime is typically Temecula's busy season. So this is where our numbers are pretty high. These are our current hotel market stats, just something to, just to be aware of. This past summer, you can see our occupancy, our revenue, our average daily room rate and our demand, we're all down slightly. But more importantly is the graph below that. And this is the Airbnb, the rental revenue for just the month of July. And you can see this past July, it was over $1.4 million in revenue for the Temecula Valley for the Airbnb market. Currently, I know our community development department is working on a, researching this topic. Our code is silent on it, but the market and the hotel market is changing. And our Visit Temecula Valley partners are really taking a look at the Airbnb market and to see if it's affecting our hotel market. So this is just kind of FYI, we will continue to monitor this, but this also tells us that requiring a feasibility analysis on the hotel incentive is definitely needed because we want to make sure it all matches up. So that is number two. The hotel incentive is the number two incentive. And the last incentive is called FRESH. So FRESH stands for food, retail, entertainment, to support high quality of life. And there would be three different parts to FRESH. So public-private partnerships, regulatory relief, and fee reimbursement, similar to what you see with the hotels and auto dealers. And what this is essentially, you might think, okay, this is very generic. Well, this was made generic on purpose because we're going to use the FRESH incentive as a business card when we go talk to retailers and restaurants and sports entertainment. Every deal is going to be different. So for example, when we go talk to Ruth Chris Steakhouse, for example, they will probably, they might be going into the mall. Well, the deal with the mall, their tenant improvement. So maybe the fee reimbursement incentive is not right for Ruth Chris Steakhouse, but maybe paying their sewer connection fees is. So that deal is going to be different than Topgolf, for example. If we try and recruit Topgolf, they'll be constructing on vacant land. Then we have developer fees. So that's a different deal versus a ice skating rink, for example. That might be a public-private partnership. So all the deals are so different that we kept the FRESH incentive very, very general so we can go and we can have conversations with these desired sectors, bring the deal back to the Subcommittee for their review, and if it passes them, bring it back to the city council for review. So that is a recap of the three incentives and the economic development strategy. With all that being said, the recommendation tonight is that the city council approve the 2018 economic development strategy as supported and recommended by the Economic Development Committee of Comachero and Edwards. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, questions?
Christine, nice staff report. I was going to tell City Manager Adams, as long as Christine was going to give a report, she should give a report on our whole department. And it seems like you did it anyway, so.
Oh, cool.
So good job. I really did appreciate that. And then over to the Subcommittee for tackling this so quickly. Thank you as well, and I think you did real, real good. So here's my question. It looks very comprehensive. I didn't see any, any exact figures in there per se. So this is more or less a toolbox.
Exactly.
Okay. And so we have a lot of latitude as to what we can offer. We just don't want to offer more than what we're going to take in. Is that the general idea?
Absolutely. We know, especially now that Temecula is mostly built out, just like development now is kind of, nothing's as easy as a, you know, vacant piece of land. There's going to be some interesting deals, and we got to get creative on what we have left and what we want to bring in. And so that's why we'll bring in the deals. It is, of course, there has to be a rate of return. There has to be a benefit to the city. The deals will be vetted by the Economic Development Committee, and then they'll be brought forth to city council for your review as well.
Got it. So I just want to be clear because I'm not too fuzzy. I think you did a good job, but I just want to be clear. If, if let's say a hotel is bringing, slated to bring in, let's say, 10 million, that would, that would be too much. Let's just say a million dollars a year in TOT, okay? And somebody wanted us to do a deal with them for a four-star hotel at, let's say, over 10-year period, a million dollars a year. We would, if they only brought in $5 million, obviously, we're not going to give them anything. We're not, we're not supplementing it. It's only what they bring in that we have to deal with, correct?
Exactly. So in the deal, we wouldn't say, oh, we're going to give you $5 million a year. It's performance-driven. So if, they may think they're bringing in $5 million, but if they only bring in $4 million, they would only get half of that. So there wouldn't be a restrictive number per se. It's, it's a more performance-driven on their part.
So there's, for them, there's an element of risk, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
And, and really no room for hyperbole as long as we've done our homework and, actually, even if we have done our homework and we concur that, let's say, the figures are correct, if it doesn't perform, okay, as let's say, a report or all the figures and prognostications indicate, it just flounders, or let's say, there's a bad economy or what have you.
Right.
In this situation, we're not on the hook.
Exactly. We're not, we don't have any number connected to them. We're holding, and we're holding their feet to the fire. They have to keep their end of the bargain up, which is you have to stay a four-star hotel. You can't dip on your service. You can't dip on your upkeep of the hotel. So that is an element as well.
And last question. Conversely, the council's hands by implementing this tonight are not tied to any, to any incentive amount. In other words, if, if somebody came here, I'm going to use hyperbole with this fantastic project that we set, it all, it all made sense, and they needed a $20 million subsidy, and it all worked out, okay? If we wanted to do it, we could. This does not tie our hands, correct?
Right. You see no numbers in here. It's very, it's generic by purpose. And everything, every incentive that we bring forward has to be approved at a public hearing in front of everyone.
Good. Thank you very much.
And just, and obviously, we, I'm familiar with it, and we've gone through it a time or two, but I know I raised this at the last meeting we had, too, and I still am looking at your presentation, which is very good. Thank you. The, the subject of vacation rentals, and I know you mentioned that the hotel revenue has dropped a little bit. Those numbers are more than a little bit, and I think they're significant.
Yeah.
And while that's not the subject matter of tonight's discussion, I think we, it's a companion piece to this. And particularly, as we look at the possibility of incentives for four-star hotels that we currently don't have and want to attract, it's not going to make a whole lot of sense if that we offer an incentive for businesses that are not going to succeed, and it'll be perceived that way. I think the perception out there in the marketplace will be, well, sure, they're offering incentives. Nobody's going to build a hotel, you know, in Temecula or other areas. I mean, it's a problem all over the country. So what I know, Mr. City Manager, I know that we're looking at it. It's been a while that we've been looking at it. It's a complex subject. But I do think that we need to bring something forward for discussion sooner rather than later as to what we're going to do, because we can see one of our most robust industries almost destroyed, or maybe destroyed. Maybe not this year or next year or the year after, but it's always been our style to be proactive. And I think we have to look at that very seriously. I don't know what the answers are, but, but we've got to raise the discussion, I think, to a higher level. That was it for now.
All right. Any others? All right. I just have one quick one. And that's, you know, the distinction in economic incentives for developing a project versus the maintenance and operation of the project. And I know you had mentioned this earlier this morning at the mayor's meeting. I'm looking at Mr. Butler here. And, you know, when I, when I think of the, the car dealership, it makes sense to, you know, have to be concerned about the prevailing wage issue and all of that associated with it, because you were trying to attract a business to come here, to construct a certain type of business here. But the TOT incentives that are being talked about for hotel operations, you know, I see that as an operations, not a construction incentive, right? So anybody can construct a hotel. It's, it's can we get that hotel to operate at not a three-star level, but a four or five-star level? And so you're trying to incentivize them for operations, not necessarily construction. Because my understanding of the, the status of a Because my understanding of the, the status of a hotel is based off of the service levels, not necessarily just the amenities. It's, I mean, I understand it's a combination of both, but to jump to that next level, it really has to do all with service, not, you know, the construction of the building itself.
Actually, in one of our committee meetings, we were talking about, and I think Lynn pulled out, Lynn from planning pulled out some of the requirements for a four-star, for a diamond, and a lot of that is related to construction. So the finishings is a big part of what makes a four-star hotel.
Sure. So, but I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand how, how we might be able to tease that apart because are we trying to incentivize, you know, quality construction or long-term maintenance and operations?
If I could, the Department of Industrial Relations has actually made a ruling on this exact thing right here, and it's their interpretation that most of the incentives that are brought forward are to help facilitate or fund the construction of a hotel or the upgrade of a hotel to a particular level, not necessarily the operation. But there are numerous TOT agreements in place, and I'm quoting from one of their determinations here. A waiver of future payments to a public agency owed during hotel operations as a means of financing hotel construction have already been found to constitute public funding. Public funding is the key factor that determines whether or not you'll kick in prevailing wage. And so if you're looking to utilize that to leverage funding of a hotel, that is what causes it to be funded in the public realm, and that's what triggers the prevailing wage.
Well, and I guess that's my disconnect is I just want us to be clear before we, you know, proceed with that. That is it, is it indeed, you know, if a hotelier comes and says, you know, it is to, you know, help fund the construction costs because we just can't make the ends, you know, meet on this, then that's one thing. But if it's, you know, look, our, our, you know, annual operation budget is going to be, you know, X number of dollars, and this would help offset our long-term obligations, you know, for the first, you know, 10 years to be able to hold a four or five-star status, you know, then does that still have that same trigger, you know, depending on how they were going to justify the, the use of the...
Yeah, that's part of the requests that we have when we ask the potential applicant to submit feasibility analysis, performance analysis, operational analysis, and any funding gap. If there's a funding gap identified prior to construction and they're looking for some sort of incentive to help them just approach a lender and say, look, I have future revenue coming in, you can finance me now. The DIR, I have no doubt, will determine that that is public funding going towards the project. If there's any doubt, we can certainly request a determination from the Director of Department of Industrial Relations. But it would be, everything I've read so far and the research we've done, all the surrounding communities' policies that we've polled require public, or excuse me, require prevailing wage for an incentive that is in excess of de minimis.
Okay. Just, yeah, if we can tease that apart a little bit as we move through the process, that'd be good. Because I know the prevailing wage issue is, you know, potentially a big deal for certain projects and may, you know, it destroys any potential incentive.
It can be up to 30% increase.
Yeah. So, you know, so I mean, so then you're, you're saying, yeah, here's this great incentive, but then, you know, you're, you're going to have a 30% overrun in your project costs. So then, you know, why create the incentive?
Yeah. A lot of the, the large trade contractors will typically use union labor, and most union labor will fulfill prevailing wage obligations. Some of the lesser trades do not necessarily, laborers, if you will, you know, landscapes folks, those type of trades don't necessarily pay prevailing wage predominantly. But for the most part, the larger trades, if they're unionized, they'll fulfill that prevailing wage obligation. A couple of other points I just want to clarify before the council makes a determination on this. As we've written the proposed policy as it relates to four-star or higher hotels, we've recommended a maximum of 50% be eligible to be shared with that. That's our recommendation. That was the subcommittee's recommendation. That could obviously, you could, if you want to put more towards it, we can adjust that. It's also good to know that each individual deal will be vetted through the Economic Development Subcommittee for recommendation to go forward, and then each deal will have its own agreement approved per the public hearing process Christine described for that particular government code. And there has to be findings made by the council of the benefit of that economic incentive towards the community. Just want to make sure you are aware of that and you have that opportunity.
Okay. And then the, the last thing was on the FRESH concept. I realize it's, you know, necessarily vague, but I just caution, one thing I was thinking about when, when you were giving the presentation was, you know, if, say, we're working on attracting, you know, restoration hardware here to town and we, you know, give them a sweetheart deal, you know, based on some, you know, incentive, sharing, whatever the, the program might be, it sort of sets a bar for, you know, others. And I know, you know, there's only, you know, so many companies that are going to be alike that are trying to come to Temecula, but it just, it sets a certain precedent for everybody else coming in. So, you know, we either need to be very clear that, you know, the, as a case-by-case basis, that, you know, the 30% arrangement we made with this company does not apply to, you know, and it's a unique circumstance. Or, you know, conversely, if we do set, you know, a certain precedent, then everybody else coming into town is going to say, well, we want the same deal. And we may not be, you know, willing to give that, but it's all, you know, it's all going to be public information. And so we don't want to, you know, paint ourselves into a corner either and give away, you know, everything and incentives just to get companies here and recognize that some companies, you know, are worth incentivizing more than others.
Mr. Mayor, we, we discussed that very thing, and we established the, you saw the terms luxury noted in the report, and there will be a definition of exactly what that means. And so we know, understand that we have to limit the incentives as we go along, but yes, that will be, that will be clear, clarified.
Yeah. To expand on that a little bit more as well, the whole idea here, and I don't think I have to say it, but just to bring it up, is to go after and attract the very top kind of businesses that we want in Temecula and don't have. It's not to provide incentives for everybody to come here. And so we have the ability to identify who we want to go after. You brought up restoration hardware. It'd be very easy for us to, to give an incentive to restoration hardware, and then anyone else who comes in, we can say, if you want to build restoration hardware, we'll give you that incentive. I mean, that's a little bit extreme, but that's kind of, you take it, you know, down the road. So we can be pretty tight in, in how we do this. And I think it's really critical for us to remember that, you know, we had a lot of talk about where the holes are. So we came up with names like Ruth Chris and Restoration Hardware.
And Whole Foods.
And Whole Foods. And, and, you know, that, that's what we want, and that's who this would apply to.
Okay. Fair enough.
One other point. A lot of, when we were doing our research on what other communities have done, a lot of them had sunsets on their incentive policies. Whereas not one written in here as it sits today, but it's something to consider and perhaps introduce if there's a concern that the incentive might last too long. Now, each individual agreement will obviously have an expiration on it and a term that's fixed, but the incentive policy itself, right now, currently doesn't have a sunset on it. And if you wanted to entertain introducing one, we certainly could.
Mr. Mayor, can I, just a question, Greg. Why would we want to? If the whole idea is to get a very narrow range of who we want and we haven't gotten them yet, why would we want a sunset? I mean, I don't care if we do, we can always revisit it and continue it if we want to.
Yeah, you could repeal it at any time, but at, at some point in time, one of them that I read, I think it was somewhere out in a desert, they were looking to incentivize hotel, luxury hotel development, and they put a timeframe expiration on it. And so what it kind of did was prompted those hotels to come forward before the expiration of that incentive.
That's a good point.
Exactly.
Kind of like what we did with the hospital.
All right. So I think we need a motion on this.
Do I have some comments?
Oh, yeah, please.
Public speakers.
Yeah, do we have any public speakers? No, didn't think so. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things. Again, reiterate, good work. You did it real fast, and I think you guys did it comprehensively. Just some quick comments. You know, I've noticed over the years, we as a city and maybe cities in general go through this evolution. If you take us back to 1989, and by the way, next year, we'll be celebrating our 30th anniversary as a city. You go back to the beginning, those early years, geez, we would have taken anything, right? You know, the place where the mall now sits was approved for a Walmart, and that's a long story, and we won't, we won't get into that, but it, you know, became a hair's breadth to be in a Walmart. So, but the cities go through an evolution. So back in, in that time, in the beginning, we would have done anything to get those people here. And then we entered into a phase where, hey, you know what? We're doing everything right. Companies are coming, economy's booming. We could pick and choose, and we did pick and choose. And we really, you know, we told people, you know, come if you want, if you don't, don't. But our development standards are high. A lot of people complained, but we maintain them. And the result of it is the city that you see today. A very clean city, a very, a city that's maintained all the time, good development, those type of things. That, that was by design, not by accident. Then we've kind of evolved into now. Now is if we want to have these type of companies, it's because we want them, okay? We're taking it, as my colleague said, to the next level. And that's just a choice. That's just a desire that, you know, we got a, we got a great area, we got the wine country, we got the Pachanga Resort, we have here everything in Temecula proper, but we brought up hotels, we don't have a four-star hotel, we don't have a Ruth Chris. So we kind of want to elevate our game. How do we do that? We don't know. We're, we're just kind of launching in. When we did the car dealerships, I kind of think we were between kind of the middle of the road with the evolution as a city where, you know what, we were kind of, you know, we want you, but maybe not, and then kind of right on the cusp of now. So take Mercedes. The way sales tax is dished out, if somebody bought a Mercedes in San Diego, we were still going to get our sales tax for that car. So we know that they did not have to be in Temecula proper. So why would we give them an incentive? Same thing with Audi. Why? Because we wanted Mercedes. We wanted the prestige of having a Mercedes and what came with that, the, all the different things that come with that. I mean, and of course, the development and Ice Entry Monument, et cetera. But then take it to Audi. Same thing. Why did we need them to be here? We would have collected the sales tax anyway, but...
That's where they get all their money.
Well, we wanted up our game, okay? And say, look, we wanted to have luxury car dealerships, and we're going to continue.
And it makes a statement about the city.
And it makes a statement about the city. So this, this process is the same thing, okay? Not necessarily to give anything away, but now we're starting to target. We're, we're in a place where, where, you know what, we don't need a four-star hotel, but if we're going to up our game, we need four-star hotels. If we're going to up our game, we want to up our dining game, okay? You know, and, and on and on and on. And that's where the incentives kind of come into place. So I'll finish up, two other comments. I'm not worried, I, I support this, and I said it before, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. So, you know, if somebody... Yeah, I mean, if somebody comes in here with a four-star hotel, and I'm using the hotel because it's easiest when we all know about it, Truax Hotel, what have you, comes in here and wants some sort of subsidy, and it's the difference between him getting built or not. Hey, if he doesn't build it, we're getting nothing. If he does build it, okay, so we get nothing a little longer, but sometime after that, we're going to get something, and that's a good move. Each thing has to be evaluated on its own merits. So a couple of things. I, I don't want to put a 50% cap in there. I, I, was that a cap or a recommendation?
That was our recommendation as far as what we presented to the Economic Development Subcommittee with the thinking we would share 50/50 with the developer. They would get some additional revenue and the city would get some additional revenue.
Got it. If, if you don't mind, let's leave that fluid. Let each deal be its deal, okay? Maybe we give them 100%, maybe 50%, maybe 25%. I don't know. We'll know what to do at the time based on all the economics. The other thing Mayor Ron brought up, and I think it should be a strong statement, and that is the disclaimer that, listen, this, there's not one size fits all. In fact, you can start right there at the pleasure of the city council. I mean, it's got to be something that floats our boat as a city. We all represent you out there anyway, so, you know, it's just, it's got to fit that, that mold. And if we give an incentive to a hotelier or Ruth Chris, maybe we won't give it to a Morton's, maybe we will. I don't know. You know, we'll just have to make that decision at the time. So a strong disclaimer, I'm totally there with you. I don't want somebody coming in here and saying, well, he got it, I want it.
I would be happy to be in a situation where we had to consider each or both.
So would I. And I want both.
Yeah.
Just don't want to lock us into, and why we want the disclaimer is I don't want somebody, let me tell you, I mean, Jeff, I'll take you back to 2008, okay?
Please do.
Okay. Which, which it happened with our redevelopment agency, and I think, you know, it's, it was a good point, and I don't want to, you know...
No, you're right.
And I, and I don't want to lose it. And back then, we had one developer claiming that another developer got a better deal from the redevelopment agency. Each deal was different. Each deal had its own economics and its own financing, but in that person's eyes, they couldn't understand why he got it and I didn't, no matter what we said. And I don't mean I, I'm speaking in the second person. Anyway, so a strong statement that this is a totally arbitrary policy to be evaluated on an individual basis, that's, that's my two cents. And good job. I will move the item.
I'll second it for discussion, but I want to continue if I may. Thanks, Mike, and I agree with just about everything you said. But you know, I got to challenge her, or we wouldn't be who we are. I, I think we should set a, a cap on the amount shared. And the reason I say that is because if we leave it open-ended, everyone who comes in, if anybody comes in, is going to say, I want 100%. You said you can give me anything you want. I want 100%. Well, that's going to be a bad way to negotiate, I think, and puts us in a, in an awkward position, a difficult position. If you feel more comfortable, it should be a little higher. I'd be okay with that, maybe at 60% or 70%. But I think there should be something that, that indicates there's a cap. You've been involved in a lot of negotiations, I've been involved in a lot of negotiation, and I suppose we all have. And the typical negotiation is, if I'm the one looking for something, I'm going to push you as hard as I possibly can until you put up a wall in front of me and you say, that's it, I can't go anymore. And setting a cap does that for us and helps us in, in negotiation, so.
So to establish expectations.
Yeah. Yeah, and helping the negotiation.
Yeah. Well, I, you know what, I don't necessarily disagree with you. I really don't.
But...
Well, there is a but coming, but, you know, for 20 years, you've been Comateroing me and I've been negaring you, so here we go again.
Yep.
Contrastly to what you said, which I don't necessarily disagree with, but let's say Ruth Chris comes in here and says, look, you know, we want 10 years' worth of a sales tax rebated. And, I mean, are we going to say, no, we're only giving you 50%? I mean, why tie our hands?
If I, well, maybe I'm wrong, wasn't that 50% only the TOT?
Yeah.
Different deal for restaurants and...
Okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you. Let's, let's move it to a hotel. Again, the, one of the hotels that, where the requests recently came was from the Truax Hotel. They walk in here and say, look, it's a difference between me building it or not, whether you believe it or not, it's a whole nother whatever, but, but they say, I need it for 10, 10 years, and I need 100%. Let's say it's a million dollars a year, $10 million for 10 years. Why would we want to tie our hands from considering that? I mean, and just say, nope, we have a policy that says 50%. It's $5 million, and we're not budging, sorry. Why would we do that?
Who's going to sit in judgment on that and say, yeah, you have to have it? And, and I don't mean to, this is not about Truax or anybody else, but...
No, no, it's not, it's not.
That's a judgment call, that's a very sophisticated judgment call. And something else comes into play there as well. Yes, we want a four-star hotel, no question about it. If we don't give them 100%, do they build a three-star hotel and we still get virtually all the revenue we would have had before? We don't get a four-star hotel. So, you know, the, I, I think we're just putting ourselves in a box. I can't imagine anybody coming forward and asking for a subsidy that doesn't ask for 100% and then try to backfill everything to show that, that it's warranted. It's a really slippery slope.
So, so you know what? I think we both have valid positions. I, I really do. So on this one, I'm willing to compromise primarily because if, if a deal was presented to us that exceeded that, we, we can always revisit it with council authority.
Yes.
And so we're, we're, and we're not, we're, in one sense, we're setting a policy, but we're, we're in, and, we're not, we're, in one sense, we're setting a policy, but we're not tying our hands, so I'm cool with that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, but you, you bring up, I don't want to reopen this, but you, but you do, you bring up a compelling argument, which is, you know, fifty percent in my mind is a bit arbitrary, right? I mean, we could set fifty percent because other cities have, but, you know, do we have an economic reason why that was the number that was selected? I mean, is there a rationale behind it aside from just a standard, this is what's done other places?
No, we thought it would be fair to share equally in the, the profits of a future endeavor, and to help offset the city's expenses that will come with the additional development and the services required to provide with the future development.
But I'm thinking of the sales tax sharing agreement that we did a little while ago. We, we didn't stick to a fifty-fifty, we had some flexibility in a sliding scale, right, where we sort of had a front end that was different than the subsequent years?
Yeah, that was a completely different end...
Well, no, but I, I get it, but I'm just saying that, you know, we needed that flexibility to get them to the table to, to make that agreement ultimately, right?
Yes, indeed, but it was more the city's benefit to, to graduate into where we ultimately landed.
Right, but I get that, but I, I guess my point is, is that it didn't have a hard and fast rule that we had to stick to, right? It gave us the flexibility to find the best fit for...
There was no policy in place at the time.
Exactly. So, why would we, you know, because I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, the other piece of that puzzle was an eighteen-month requirement for, you know, certificate of occupancy, right? I mean, lots of things happen, so, you know, eighteen months happens, and, you know, there's a major, you know, storm event that delays, or so, you know, any number of things could occur, so, you know, I, I'd say, in some respects, I get putting, you know, a standard out there because it gives some, some reliability or accountability, but on the other hand, you know, having too hard a fast a rule and not having some embedded flexibility where we say, under extraordinary circumstances, or, you know, for, you know, a certain company that's coming in here, that's, you know, an amazing opportunity to open up a hotel or whatever, you know, we may want to go higher than fifty percent, so, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, you know, sticking with the fifty percent number, but also, you know, maybe having some language in there that says, you know, in certain extraordinary benefits and circumstances, we should have the flexibility to, you know, seek other options, and, and much like with the eighteen months, you know, I'd hate to see that be, you know, a dealbreaker for somebody because something happened along the way that, you know, wasn't necessarily in their control.
Yeah. May I?
Yeah.
On that, I, I agree with you on the eighteen months. Stuff, stuff does happen. I, I think, for me, and we saw this, Mike, with the hospital, I don't think we want to give something out there that is totally open-ended and then keep somebody else out, you know, so I think that's the issue. I think maybe we can solve that problem by leaving the eighteen months in, or maybe making it twenty-four months, but stipulating that we would allow an extension for extraordinary circumstances or whatever, and actually write that into the, into the program.
Yeah.
Because, boy, I can tell you...
I mean, that would be terrible, you know?
And at what point in the process do you, does the city and the developers sign on the bottom line and start that eighteen-month clock? I don't think there's a hotel anywhere in the area in this economy, in this environment in terms of regulation, that can build a hotel in less than four years, from inception to, to opening, so, yeah, I think that, that is problematic.
So, I, I think we're all in a, in a good place, and I don't mind changing my motion, what should we change it to? What, where we at?
Well, if I may, again, I'd, I'd like to see the fifty percent stayed in there, I don't mind some language that says, for extraordinary circumstances, I'm a little, I'd love to see a definition of what that means. If we could define it, I'd like to see the eighteen months go to twenty-four with, with language that the applicant can apply for an extension of that, say, in twelve, twelve month intervals. And then, I don't think we have to put a cap on the end of that, because we can always say no to the extension.
Does that get done what you mentioned, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, do I need to restate my motion, or do you guys got it?
Can I take a crack?
Sure.
All right. So, with regard to the timeframe, adjust eighteen months to twenty-four months, unless extended by action of the city council.
Yes.
And then, language with regard to the sharing, fifty percent held firm, each individual agreement, though, there's some negotiation room.
I agree with the concept, but that's a little contradictory.
That's the concept, but I mean, how do you want it worded, and, you know, fifty percent unless modified by action of the city council?
Yep, that's what Mike said.
That's fine, that's exactly, that's exactly right. Which even if you left it unsaid, that, that...
It can be revisited by the city council.
Right, yeah.
Maybe that's better, if you're comfortable with that, to leave it unsaid.
I think, I think this is serving as really a guideline to us and the city council, more than a hard and fast policy, but for what it's worth, I think there's flexibility built into some of what we discuss.
I think, not to belabor it again, but if, if, if we can get to the same place by not putting the language in that, you know, it could be amended or increased by city council, we don't put the idea out there on everybody's head.
I think we could get away with not putting that in there, because any city council, we can't tie a future city council's hands, period, so...
I mean, it sort of goes without saying.
It's implied, anyway.
Let's remove that, that portion, okay? Keep it at fifty percent, and everybody up here knows that if something is, exceeds fifty percent, I'll just have to have the council consider it. So, I'll amend my motion to reflect what Mr. Butler said.
And I'll amend second.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and cast your votes.
You only had one vote.
Mike was the only one that voted, apparently. Well, so...
Just go ahead and do a voice vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes five-zero. Thank you so much.
Good job.
All right, moving on, commission. We have Mr. Sullivan back, great to see you at the dais, Mr. Sullivan, Traffic Safety Commissioner. Tell us what's new with traffic safety.
Well, thank you, it's, it's really a great pleasure to be back, I can tell you, I looked forward to it. At our last meeting last week, Red Hawk Homeowners Association reached out to the traffic department, seeking a stop sign at Channel and Dorchester, which is just east of Butterfield and south of Highway seventy-nine. Traffic department went out, looked at the situation, made the recommendations, and the commission endorsed those recommendations. They'll come to you soon in a, an agenda.
All right, thanks so much. Mr. Yeomans, good evening.
Good evening. If I could just take a second and thank the city council for your support of Safe and the FJC, as most people know, I've been on that board for many, many years, and the actions that were taken tonight with the FJC means an awful lot to the city, and to me that you acknowledge that. Thank you very much, and that's all I've got for night, thank you.
All right, and the intrepid Mr. Schwank, good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, last council meeting, we had Hannah Hernandez here for white king awareness. So Hannah wrote you all a letter, she's a student at Temec Elementary, and, and I work there, so she handed to me and said, can you please take this to council? I'll leave this over here, she wrote this on her Braille machine, so you can come feel it, I'll read you what she wrote. She says, "Thank you for letting me come to city hall. It might have seemed like it was not fun, but it was just a little bit scary for me. It was a pleasure to be there. Is there a way to do something similar? Thanks again, your friend Hannah." Hannah wants to come back.
All right, good, let's make sure she gets here.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, city manager, or no, Public Safety, Chief DeHart, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So your Temecula Fire Department responded to over seven-hundred-and-fifty calls for service last month, the month of September. Our highest calls were five-hundred-and-eighty-seven, and those were medical emergencies, seventy-three were traffic accidents, and then, the last but not least, the dreaded false alarms were up at fifty-one. So, with that, this week is Fire Prevention Week, October seventh through October thirteenth. So, the theme of that by the National Fire Protection Association is look, learn, and listen. Look means to look around your residence, find and identify fire hazards and mitigate them. Learn is learn two ways out of every room of your residence and exercise that plan. And listen is to listen to all of your smoke detector equipment and not ignore it, and exit immediately when those sound. All this information is on our website, we've also included some Halloween stuff on our website, and this weekend, I'd like to remind people that Open House at ninety-five for Fire Prevention Week is Saturday, October thirteenth, from nine to one. Everybody's welcome to come out, we have a lot of good handouts, information, we've also added to our website the Be Safe Halloween tips. Some of this stuff is really important, we've had some kids get burned and stuff due to costumes and stuff like that, so, please go to the city website, go to the fire department, you can pull this information down, and it gives you the information to keep your children safe during Halloween. And that is the end of my report.
All right. You guys did the youth cert class this weekend, this past weekend, our daughter Delilah attended that along with, I think, fifty-nine other youth from around the valley, and was an amazing opportunity for her, she talked all about it, and so now she's safer than either of her parents, I think. But, you know, amazing job, she had nothing but praise, thanks to Matt Hayes and all, all the staff and volunteers, sounded like it was an incredible experience for all of the folks involved, so thanks again for hosting that.
Yeah, Matt and his crew did a really good job, they did do fifty-nine teens, and that's the biggest teen class we've had so far, and it was very successful, and his team also did a recertification refresher class for fifty-five adults as well, so, they've, they've been busy this month.
Great. All right, thanks, sir. City managers, report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple items. Commissioner Sullivan, welcome back, I know you've been through a lot, so it's good to see you over there. The I-1579 interchange is coming to an end. We are winding this project down, and we expect to be wrapped up with the majority of the work by the end of November, we're very excited about that, about a month ahead of schedule, but I do want to put everybody on alert that, not this week, but next week, particularly October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth will be the heavier congested days where our contractor is required to have some hard closures. You can see the warnings there and when those are gonna occur, but these are round-the-clock for two days, particularly on the northbound on-ramp, and Thursday evening, you can see there, and then Temecula Parkway westbound will be necked down and to one lane, so there is gonna be congestion, there are detours in place, the message boards are out, social media is out, we're encouraging everyone to have some patience, but it will be a little bit challenging, a little bit frustrating for two straight days. But this, we chose this path because two days of pain was better than two weeks of pain, and so, we're gonna allow the contractor to work around the clock, we'll pull the Band-Aid off, and we'll get to the finish line here at the end of November, so, that's my public service announcement for, for the interchange, so thank you.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
We had a closed session tonight, but we have no actions to report under the Brown Act.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, well, that concludes this evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
All right, all those in favor? See you next time.